Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Before proceeding, I'd like to invite our new general manager, Mr. Adam Nelson, who has just commenced a five-year term last Saturday, to open the proceedings with a pre-op.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council. Direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen.
I would like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Also, to remind everyone, the meeting is being recorded audio visually and will be available on council's website later this week. Thank you. We have the meeting open, and a note that we have a full house, no apologies. Item two, confirmation of minutes for 17th January and the special council meeting on the 24th of June, as circulated, be taken as read and preferred. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Second, Alderman Newington. All those in favour. Carry unanimously. Item three, mayor's communication. Several points. Firstly, I'd like to table the results from the Tasmanian Electoral Commission for the Elgat GMC elections, and congratulate Alderman Blomley on being elected to the General Management Committee of Elgat. Thank you.
Secondly, I'd like to report on the Homelessness Alliance meeting, which was held on the 5th of July. It was pretty much a discussion about the way forward. The alliances decided, the Tascos put forward a governance model which was considered. Ressourcing, possible resourcing was looked at, but no decisions taken in that regard. There was a discussion about audits from councils about their public facilities, public showers, lockers, halls, et cetera, to see what capacity we had to assist with homeless people, but recognising as well that standards and protocols in regard to security, referrals, training, and vetting staff would be a factor as well, and that we should consider looking at ways forward in that regard. I can advise that Mr. Tooey, as community development manager, was, attended the meeting also, and going forward, we'll keep a watching brief on the alliance meetings. And we haven't got the minutes yet, but Hobart City Council have undertaken temporarily at least to offer the secretariat of the alliance, and they will issue the minutes very shortly, and I'll circulate them to all Aldermen once they've been, once they come out. And that's all I've got at this stage to report on. If there are any questions at all? Item four, council notes the workshops conducted on the 24th of June and the 1st of July.
Mr. Mayor, I must a question through you to our new general manager.
Can we get something on the agenda first, please? Are you moving that we...
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Can we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Edmonds. Alderman Richard James.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, my question through you to our new general manager. In relation to Rosney Hill, Mr. Nelson, would it take a simple majority of council to revoke Hunter Developments preferred developer status?
Yes, I believe that's the case. Okay, if there are no other questions or discussion, I'll put the motion that we note those workshops. All those in favour? Carry unanimously. Thank you. Item five, declarations of interest of Aldermen or closest association. Aldermen peers.
Mayor, look, I've sort of raised on two issues here. I've come up to clear an interest on 11.3.6, but I've just noticed one thing in the address. Two-Stroke Eight Bayfield Street, but I believe that's actually my address. And we had this trouble when we were trying to get the NBN on, because my address, someone in the building put it down as their address, and we had all the trouble in the world trying to get the NBN on. So, I'm just a bit baffled by that.
Well, thank you for drawing on, note your interest in it, but no doubt we'll follow this up.
Thank you.
Alderman Von Berto.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 11.3.7. The last planning item.
Any other conflicts, please? If you want to make a statement, you're welcome to.
It's come to my notice that an email I sent in relation to 11.3.7 could be construed as having a conflict of interest. The email related to an issue that was being developed there about who was going to...
Was that 3.6, not 3.7?
So, the issue arose when I had an approach from the owner suggesting that they would supply a, would fund one of the car parking spaces. I, at that point, was under the misapprehension that that was an additional one, and that they weren't actually funding the original one space. As a consequence of that, I revealed that I was prepared to guarantee that, but it was in the context in which the email also goes on to say that I could get that written guarantee from the owner. So, in that context, I wasn't actually offering to do the thing, but I'm simply saying that it would simply make the point that I wouldn't put such a guarantee in the unreason. So, as a consequence, I have no conflict of interest, if you can be or otherwise, in that.
Other items under this? Thank you. Item six, tabling of petitions. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two petitions to be tabled tonight, both relating to Howra Gardens. The first one is a petition of, let's see how many signatories? I think that's in the agenda.
Fifty-four signatories, yeah.
And the second petition, again on the same topic of the Howra Gardens proposal, for a number of other stated...
Hundred and twenty-four.
Hundred and twenty-four signatories.
Thank you. Any other petitions from the floor? Thank you. Moving on to item seven. Public question time, there's no items at 7.1, 7.2. 7.3, there's an answer to a previous question taken on notice. General Manager.
Yes, the answer's been provided, and I don't think we need to restate it tonight.
That's okay. It'll be in the minutes as well.
It will be.
7.4, are there any questions without notice from members of the public? Thank you. If you'd come forward, please. Yes, please come forward to the microphone.
Pardon me? My name's Joanne Marsh, and I live at 32A King Street, BelReeve. In 2015, nearly 600 people were concerned enough about the future of BelReeve Beach Park to sign a petition relating to the relocation of the entire car park onto a sunny, open, valuable green space beside Durland Street after the BelReeve Beach Park master plan was revised without extensive public consultation. In February 2015, 259 people responded to a request for ideas to further enhance the revised plan. A letter from Mayor Chipman dated the 1st of April 2015 stated that the council had resolved that the BelReeve Beach Park master plan be staged over three financial years, subject to council approval as part of future annual plans. So, this is my question. Given that in 2019, the condition of BelReeve Beach Park remains a disgrace to the city of Clarence, what can the community expect in regard to public information about its design and set timeframes for the completion of the entire BelReeve Beach Park master plan?
Graham, are you in a position to answer that now, or take it?
I will take it on notice, Mr. Mayor, to answer in further detail, but I think as I've advised Alderman before, we've received a state government grant of $100,000 to progress the next stage of the BelReeve Beach Park. We're in detailed design at the moment, and with answering the question on notice, without notice, I will actually provide a detail of the timings of coming up. There's a number of projects occurring over this next 12 months at the BelReeve Beach Park.
If we could have it included in the weekly briefing reports, so it comes to the next council meeting as well, please. Thank you. Are there any other questions without notice from members of the public? Thank you. Deputations from members of the public, General Manager.
The first deputation tonight is from Mr. Eric Roberts of Warrain in respect to the issue of homelessness.
As you come forward, I do remind all speakers, there's only a three-minute opportunity to speak, and there'll be a warning tone at two and a half minutes. So, please come forward.
My right to go. Just before I start, I'd like to acknowledge all Aboriginal elders, past, present, and emerging. So, I'm here talking today about youth homelessness, and that's a pretty big topic for me as a youth myself, and somebody who has almost had to, you know, spend a couple nights, if not longer, on the street. And this is a topic that is developing in our society quite rapidly. I mean, unfortunately, I don't have the facts, you know, the exact numbers on me due to technical issues, but there's hundreds of thousands of people in Australia who are homeless, and a lot of those are young people. I believe I saw a fact of a couple thousand children under 10 living rough, like living, you know, not in overcrowded places, which does happen, a lot of. I've seen many cases of it, and, but they're literally living, you know, on the streets and in tents, you know, not even tents, you know, huddled up in corners. If I might, I'll talk about an experience. I went out on Saturday night with the executive of my society. We spent a whole night out, taking out some hand warmers and some other sanitary objects for people, and just going around and talking with them, and we came across, luckily, not too many young people, but we came along a fair amount of people, and we got, you know, most of our stuff handed out. But a lot of it was not even having a place to stay, it was just somewhere to put their stuff, you know, because these people are talked about having to hide their possessions in a bush and having people come along and take it. You know, this is not an issue that, you know, we can be talking about a little bit. This is something we actually have to take action on, and I think I talk to the council here as community leaders. I think there needs to be a more hands-on approach in looking after people in a way where even if they can't find accommodation, finding somewhere to keep their, you know, possessions. So, you know, at least that, that's a stepping stone, in my opinion. You know, obviously, there's, you know, there's a housing crisis, but in the meantime, we can at least try and look after people. Is that not a necessity of life and liberty, housing? Not sure how I'm running on time, but that's probably it.
Look, Mr. Roberts, can I say thank you very much for the work that you're doing in this space, and your caring is very much appreciated. There is a lot of empathy with what you've pointed to, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker tonight is Mr. Dennis Matthews, speaking in respect to the Howra Gardens suburb proposal.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Firstly, I ask on the, that on the matter of the recession and the in-principle approval of the request from the developments, developers for the creation of a new suburb called Howra Gardens, that the vote not only be an absolute majority, but it be a unanimous vote for the recession. This in-principle approval should never have happened. To me, it's very clear that on April the 8th meeting, there were some councillors who voted for this approval that did not understand the impact that this would have for the residents. It appears they're convinced by other councillors that this is the way to go. Were they convinced by other councillors that community consultation was a shoo-in and would be supported? I don't know. Here we have a situation where council officers carried out their duties with professionalism, diligence, and integrity, and presented a report, as shown in the April 8th agenda, that it recommended the council reject the application for very appropriate reasons. The report showed the argument against the application was significant, refuting all the claims for made by the developers. And at point 2.15 of the report states this, particularly to say that realignment of boundaries with a new subdivision, the realignment is suggested to be at least in part on the basis of the development will be more in character with Howra than Rokeby. The reasoning suggests fundamentally commercial or economic reason for seeking the renaming of the suburb and realignment of the suburb boundary, that is, a suburb more aligned with Howra will become more desirable than Rokeby. If this is a primary reason, I'm underpinning the proposal. It is suggested in improper reason for the purpose of the rules. In addition to this, all other reasons for rejection were equally appropriate, as residents affected would be adversely affected by name change, and blind Freddie could see that. Why would residents support this? Now, having been provided with this information, the vote at the meeting of April 8th should have rejected the application, but instead approved the application in principle. Why? I mean, really? All in all, there was never a case for approval, and in any event, issues with the nomenclature board and surveyor general would have, had to be overcome, and all for the wrong reasons. The fact that affected residents would be subject to, subject to much worry and concern as the properties would lose value, if not located officially in Howra, as they are now, didn't seem to be much of a concern to those councillors who voted no, except to those who voted no. I correct that. I would hope that those councillors who now see that it was an error of judgment to vote yes, and will be not so easily swayed next time. So, to sum up, rescinding this council decision is the only way to go now, and thankfully so. I also support option one, because it's the best outcome for access and far less complex than other options than do nothing. I thank Alderman Mulder and concerned residents.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Our third speaker tonight is Mr. Stephen Royal, speaking regarding the change of postcode in the Rokeby area.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Moving. Yes, my name's Stephen Royal. The subject I've got tonight is the invasive postcode change from 7019 to 71018. Just a brief outline of my situation. Myself and my family have been involved in the Rokeby area since 1976. I have sold one house, I've built two elsewhere, and I have returned to live in Rokeby, because I think it's a good place to live. The area has grown and improved, and by the prices of the houses, with their routing at the moment on sale, this is a direct achievement by the residents of the area. This postcode invasive is only causing a social division in Rokeby. I've done a little, many roundabout the place, and it's causing a lot of problems, because we've got, it's the social division that's creeping in now once again. I'm here, you are there, this kind of thing. Now, this should not be allowed by the council. I believe that the council have got in control of things in different ways, and when this happens, it's just a slap in the face for the people of Rokeby, I think, and these people I spoke to agree. When you're buying anything in this world, you buy it as it is, and there's no guarantees. You make it as it is. If the council allows this to continue, it certainly will set a precedent. And God knows where this will end up. We need to stop this now, it's obvious. Greed is creeping into this, and it's up to the council to stop it now. As I've previously said, I moved into the Rokeby area in 1976, and at the time, what is called at the time, and still is, I guess, Shields' Quarry, which is on the road to South Arm. When the area of Buckingham Drive was introduced, there was a sign at Shields' Quarry that said Rokeby. That disappeared, one reason or another. I guess you can formulate your own conclusion to that. Now, the sign, as I believe and other people believe, it should be replaced, because you can see where you're coming into, Rokeby only.
If you could round out now, please, Mr. Royal.
I have, where I live, there's a young girl who's next door with a grandmother. She raised enough money to buy a house, and she's looking at buying a house at Clarence Bar. Now, this is affordable housing, and that's what we need to introduce, get the people buying houses in area like Clarence Bar, because they can see that area is improving. They are quite prepared to buy a house in the 7019, and she isn't quite happy about that, and other people around the place are doing it. And I think the council should have realised that these people need help.
Thank you. No other speakers? Item nine, motions on notice, and there are three of those. Alderman Blomley.
I move the motion, seeing it in my name, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Blomley.
Mr. Mayor, as colleagues are aware, the state liberal government has promised to build a new high school in Hobart. I am informed that the Department of Education is consulting with schools in the Greater Hobart area and the broader community to develop a solution mix for sustainable education provision that meets the changing community needs and addresses enrollment complexities. The government has developed at a cost of some $300,000 of taxpayers' funds, an education infrastructure planning framework. This framework is a planning tool that uses school information such as enrollment data, capacity figures, and population demographics to forecast enrollment demand now through to 2036. I am informed that the department has applied the framework to test the feasibility in demographic terms of an inner-city school in Hobart. The results of the feasibility study shows that while there is a reasonable demographic demand to support inner-city high school, this would not necessarily resolve enrollment pressures on those schools that are now at or close to capacity. But what did come, or what did become evident through the analysis is that the broader Greater Hobart area, in terms of educational supply and demand, is a really complex environment for a number of reasons. From the analysis, Mr. Mayor, we know that there are growing enrollments at Toruna High School. We know that we have single-sex provisions in high schools at Newtown and Overvee, and we know that parents make a number of choices where to send their child to high school based on a number of factors. So, Mr. Mayor, purely looking at demographics and the population levels, will not assist adequately determining what the future educational provision in the Greater Hobart area is. However, whatever is decided by the government, I'm sure we'd all agree, it must be future-proof. We know that the University of Tasmania is moving into the Hobart CBD, and there is not a complete understanding of what the impact of this will be. Pleasingly, the Department of Education has met with all high schools and college principals in the Greater Hobart area, including here at Rose Bay and Clarence High, to draw upon their knowledge and expertise to help solve the complexities around senior secondary education, secondary provision in the broader Hobart area. Without question, Mr. Mayor, the most important aspect of this is that the future needs of our education infrastructure are met. I'm sure most, if not all, colleagues would warmly welcome the development of a brand-new, state-of-the-art educational facility that is purpose-built to give our kids the very best educational opportunity and start in life. But waking a big new school in the middle of Hobart may not be the best idea. Hobart's transport infrastructure is already struggling to cope with current demand. There's also tight competition for passers of land big enough to develop a new school with the university acquiring most of the prime real estate in Hobart. And whilst the government's sensible approach and commitment to long-term sustainable resolution of the complex issues affecting schools the Greater Hobart area is commendable, building this facility in the city of Clarence presents a great opportunity to help decentralise major infrastructure away from Hobart Centre and ease the pressure on the CBD. We have plenty of land, we have capacity to grow, and we have a booming population. Mr. Mayor, locating this brand-new, state-of-the-art educational facility in the Clarence municipality would also reflect the fact that not only is it eastern shore-growing, it is the centre that will continue to service the massive growth in the Sural region. Mr. Mayor, it is time for the government to think outside the box and outside of the CBD, to find the best location for a new school to service the Greater Hobart region, and that is the city of Clarence. I commend the motion and seek the support of colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, look, I think it was a very well argued case of evidence. I don't know how successful it would be without us putting it forward, but we don't, we're not going to find out unless we put it forward. I mean, you look at the congestion on the, on the bridge, and from my perspective, the lack of space in the city to create a suitable place for kids to go to school and have enough recreation areas to enjoy school life. I mean, it's worth looking at, and I, you know, I think we've got nothing to lose by it, at least asking the question. And I think there's plenty of locations where we could do that.
I won't be supporting this motion. Justin Bay High closed just over five years ago. There were 90 students at the time that it closed. I was one of the founding students of Justin Bay, and there were 120 in year seven, the year that it started, so to only have 90 students across four years demonstrates a lack of demand there. The remaining students were transferred to a number of other high schools, including Rose Bay, which had additional facilities, state-of-the-art facilities developed to accommodate those students. And I'm looking at a report that appeared in the Mercury on May 2017, where the government's spokeswoman said that the new school was being considered because of massive growth in inner-city areas, particular, inner-city schools, particularly Toruna. And it's been an issue ever since Hobart High became Hobart Matrick, that students who live in the middle of the city, in West Hobart, South Hobart, North Hobart, have a choice of either travelling by bus down the long windy road to Toruna or all the way to Cosgrove, unless you choose to go to a single-sex school at Overvee or Newtown. And so I did some quick research on the numbers. Clarence High School, as of last year, had an enrollment of 504 students. Rose Bay had 700. Bayview College had 272. And Sural, which is outside Clarence, obviously, had 879, but that is a district school, so that goes across primary as well. On the western shore, Toruna has 1,029 students, so almost like Clarence and Rose Bay added together. Cosgrove, on the other hand, has 177 at the other end. A lot of parents choose to send their students to Toruna. The two single-sex schools, Newtown has 736, Overvee has 687 students. So, there's an overwhelming weight of students spread across four schools on the western shore compared to, I think it's, I haven't done the maths, but it's about twice as many as spread across four schools on the eastern shore. So, I would think that clearly that there is a demand for a public school, a government-run school, somewhere in the middle between Toruna and Cosgrove, and has been ever since Hobart High closed. So, I think that it will be interesting to see the demographics and the forecast through to 2036, but I think it supports a school where parents can send their children within, you know, 10 to 20 minutes of their home area.
Other speakers? James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this council has to be careful in relation to deviating from the nuts and bolts issues that directly affect our local community. And by that, I mean that we should not, in my opinion, be seen to be the mouthpiece be seen to be the mouthpiece of the state government, or the Education Department for that matter, because they have a role. They have the expertise in being able to determine where a new school ought to be built. And also whether there's the demand for those particular neighbourhoods and for the people in that particular community. We've, we always know, and the next motion we are about to debate, is one of the key aspects that I believe is appropriate for local government. We've all know about the three Rs, rates, rubbish and roads. Within that group of, I suppose you could say, mission, part of the mission statement, we have that responsibility to basically keep it local and keep it within what I think the aspirations of the local community are all about. And therefore, this particular issue should be, ought to be, the responsibility of the state government and the Department of Education. And we had a classic example of that from a primary school perspective in relation to Cambridge, uh, primary school, and how the state government acted. And some of us at the time didn't think it was appropriate for the state government to sort of enter into that debate. But at the end of the day, they won that argument. And therefore, they know, the department, the state government knows, where the best place for a high school has been proposed here, or to be built. I had the pleasure, I suppose you could say, of going through the private school system, the public school, no, public, private, public, and then the university. And I spent twelve months at the old Hobart Matriquulation College. That is a beautiful building, and it basically breaks your heart when you see that glorious building, which has so much history associated with the past and up to nineteen seventy-four, when I was there. And I think that needs to be reconsidered or re-established as a high school, because it's got that, um, sort of history and developed. But having said that, I will not be supporting the motion. I believe it's outside our modus operandi as a local government authority. And I believe it ought to be left to the state government and the Department of Education to do their sums. And I'm sure they have that expertise and being countless within that organisation to justify that. I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay, other speakers? Alderman Blomley, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't support this motion either. Um, one of the things is that I think that if we keep asking for things that even as some of the speakers, so I think the secretary of motion said, you know, you can only ask, um, well, I think the problem with asking for things that you know you're not likely to get and that are impractical actually demeans your position when you do go to ask for something that you really do want and that you really do need. So, I can't really go along with the argument of, oh, well, it doesn't hurt to ask. Well, it certainly hurts, I think it does. Um, Alderman Warren has effectively covered the issue with Gilston Bay High School. But might I say that there were many of us here at the time that said, why don't we close down Rose Bay rather than Gilston Bay? And then you would free up some valuable land for the government to invest in educational institutions. And it wouldn't have all those transport and other issues that Rose Bay has. Um, and there'd be room to expand, which Rose Bay doesn't have. Anyway, that's, uh, that's water under the bridge. We also are well-served by high schools here. I mean, I think of Clarence High School, where mine went to school. Um, also, the amount of effort that's going into developing the college at Bayview, at Ropie, which is really designed and gearing up to service the new growth area down through Lord of the Isle and the South Arm area. Um, and then the mention was made of Surell. Well, Surell is always, is being set up now as a, up to, as a through-to-year-twelve college to service that great growth area, um, down at the Southern Beaches areas. So, there's lots of investment going on into the education systems to meet the future demands, um, uh, outside. And as far as traffic is concerned, I think the last thing we need is even more cars coming up the Tasman Highway in the morning peak hour, trying to get kids to a high school, um, a Greenfield High School that's located here, especially when we're quite serviced with. So, um, as much as I would like to see some of the major institutions of government move to the eastern shore, I think a great one would be to start talking about moving the Royal Hobart Hospital, because even when that's completed, it will be lack, lack the capacity, and there will be need to create more capacity. And there ain't no room in Hobart.
Okay, other speakers?
Walker. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I take a lot of comfort from the letter from Minister Rockcliffe that has been circulated to all of us. Uh, it shows that the process that's going to be done through this is going to be arms-length, judicious, uh, methodical, thorough. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be no chalk-barreling when it comes to school places. Um, if we look at, uh, high schools around municipality, we have three. Rose Bay, Clarence High, and of course, Bayview. Uh, Rose Bay is a bit squeezy at the moment, but to be fair, uh, it's absorbed, uh, the intake from when Minister Patmore closed Warrane High and when Minister McKim closed, uh, Gilston Bay. So, it's had, it's had a fair bit of come into it, and it's managing it fine. There is capacity at Clarence, and, um, I think we all understand that Bayview is transformational and it possesses capacity, its future's looking amazing. If we think about some of our neighbouring municipalities, um, Glenorkie, which isn't that much smaller than us, has the two high schools of Montrose Bay and of Cosgrove. If you look at Hobart municipality, they have a choice of two. Um, they're both single-sex, being Newtown and Ogilvy. And then we move into Kingborough with Toruna and with Kingston High. Um, now, I'm at a stage in life where Saturdays are multiple, multiple kids' sports events. So, we're all getting out and meeting the communities. But I'm at the stage now where people are starting to talk about high schools. But it hasn't once been put to me by anybody that I've been associated with that they wish for another high school in Clarence. They're talking about different choices and options, but that, that, that isn't something that's, that's come to me. I think what has come to us when we think about, uh, you know, finite infrastructure budgets, is the topic of opportunity costs and an understanding that we do have real issues, particularly in the junior sector with Lord of the Isle and Cambridge. And, um, there is, there's need for infrastructure improvement. In fact, probably the biggest demand for new schooling is around the junior sector in this growing sphere here, because that's really struggling. Um, school choice to me is absolutely totemic, and we want to have options. And some parents in Clarence wish to exercise the single-sex option, and their, their, their children do as well. And that's why, um, fighting and preserving school choice so that those parents in Clarence still have the access to Ogilvy and Newtown, to me is a pretty totemic issue. So, um, with the minister's letter providing comfort, um, with, with what I understand to date, I'm in a position where I won't be supporting the motion. But taking comfort that Clarence certainly will be put into the mix when thorough arms-length demographic modelling and starting is undertaken.
Edmonds. I won't take much of anyone's time. Um, I do kind of subscribe to the want to be part of the discussion argument here, um, provided this isn't a political decision that's timed for conclusion right when we have another election. Um, I hope it's left the experts to decide. And I think I sort of agree with Alderman Walker about the letter from the minister. Um, but I would also note that in terms of, uh, investment in educational infrastructure in Clarence, um, it was only reported at the weekend that we've got three schools in Clarence on the priority list that aren't even being looked at, Clarence High, Lord of the Isle Primary and Risna Vale Primary School. So, whilst I support this motion, uh, it's not a get-out-of-jail-free card for the government for not investing in the schools that are actually crying out for it right now.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd love to comment on what a couple of Aldermen have actually said. The idea that councils only deal with roads, rates and rubbish is from the dim, dark past. Section twenty of the Local Government Act actually deals with the functions of councils. And they include to provide for the health, safety and welfare of the community and to represent and promote the interests of the community. I believe this particular motion is doing just that. I think it's been interesting to hear from some of the Aldermen, the facts and figures in relation to the various high schools that we have in Clarence. However, I suppose I've read the minister's letter in perhaps a little bit of a different way to Alderman Walker. But I think the important aspect of this motion is part B, where it says, "This council calls on the state liberal government to consider". The word "consider" is the important aspect for me, building this new educational facility in Clarence. And from what I hear from a number of Aldermen who obviously have done their homework, that's exactly what the state government will do. So, I see no harm in us actually supporting this motion. However, it will be the state government who makes the decision, and hopefully with the best of evidence and information. Thank you.
Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for your contributions this evening. And just to follow on from Alderman Von Berde, just to underscore the fact that whatever is decided by the state government, it's about future-proofing. It's about future-proofing the educational requirements of our children, the future of our state. And with the growing acceptance of the leadership role, local government can and must play in promotion of the social, economic, environmental and cultural wellbeing of our communities. It is my very firm opinion, Mr. Mayor, that we are duty-bound to take a, a stand in this. Um, the letter circulated to all Aldermen came through from the Deputy Premier in the South East, addressed to the mayor and myself, and arrived at our inboxes at five nineteen PM this afternoon, where the deputy mayor, the honourable, sorry, the deputy premier, the honourable Jeremy Rockcliffe, thanks us for our interest, uh, underscores the fact that Tasmanian government has made a significant contribution to public education across the state. And as part of their commitment to future-proofing education provision in the Greater Hobart area, the department has been working to identify education options that will deliver contemporary education into the future. Uh, the minister appreciates our commitment and dedication to education in our city and welcomes the opportunity to hear firsthand from local government representatives about strengthening education provision in this state. And that goes, as Alderman Von Berde very appropriately pointed out, the part B of the motion is that this is about, um, us engaging with the government, asking them to consider building that education facility here in Clarence. It's not saying it must do it, it's saying put us into the mix. The minister's come back today and said, "We appreciate your interest. Be assured, you certainly are in the mix." And as a result, uh, this motion, I think, is quite appropriate, worthy of colleague support tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Alderman Blomley. So, the motion is as tabled by Alderman Blomley, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Nine point two, no, it's a motion, Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion is as read, that council requests Waste Strategy South to collaborate with the Department of Primary Industries, Parks, Water and the Environment, DePewi, to investigate the formation of a reduced illegal dumping squad in southern Tasmania.
I have a second, please. Thank you, Alderman James.
Thank you. Look, dump rubbish is unsightly, can pose public health risks, and local government tends to be reactive responding to illegal dumping after it occurs rather than preventing it occurring in the first place. It can be difficult for the public to know who to notify about dumping and frustrating if the problem is not resolved promptly. Because illegal dumping is not confined to council boundaries, partnerships with other councils, the EPA, private industry and landholders are really going to be the only effective, um, way to deal with this growing problem. RID squads are regionally-based teams that work across council boundaries to combat and prevent illegal dumping. They provide a coordinated and strategic approach to illegal dumping, and they are tailored to the particular challenges faced in each region. In New South Wales, RID squads are jointly funded by the EPA and councils. RID squads have generated efficiencies of scale and technology in tackling dumping. RID squads identify and patrol illegal dumping hotspots, investigate illegal dumping incidents and take action against offenders. They deter community members from illegal dumping and educate them about the consequences. They track down illegal landfills, organise clean-ups, run a statewide hotline to report incidents of illegal dumping and provide an easy-to-use online portal for reporting the incidents of dumping. Now, with DePewi releasing the draft Waste Action Plan, the timing is right for councils to investigate and push forward with piloting a RID squad in southern Tasmania. Whilst the draft action plan, uh, released last month is laudable, in many aspects it is silent on the issue of illegal dumping. And councils need to ensure the final action plan also makes this a priority issue. If we don't shape the direction of managing illegal dumping, council will be left with managing any uptick in dumping. And the draft plan, or the draft strategy, proposes a waste levy with increased expenses for the disposal of rubbish. The waste levy is intended to facilitate better, um, reuse through price signals, and it also offers a revenue stream, and I believe that could help fund a RID squad. We need to name up that tackling illegal dumping should be a key funding priority of any imposed waste levy. This motion is not revolutionary. DePewi and Waste Strategy South will have nearly twenty years of RID squad experience and existing resources in New South Wales to draw upon. The figures I'll quote are from the New South Wales Illegal Dumping Strategy seventeen twenty-one. Their show, shows, and this is unsurprising, that fewer people dump waste if they think they will be caught. It shows that coordinated response of public awareness through communication, education, media events, branding and science, delivered an increase in the reporting of illegal dumping by nearly forty percent between fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen. Community reporting sends a clear message that dumping gets noticed and helps the investigation of the crime, targeting hotspots and problem waste. In twenty seventeen, or bicep twenty seventeen, four thousand six hundred and forty tonnes of dump waste had been cleaned up. Infrastructure prevention measures implemented included two hundred and seventeen surveillance cameras, three hundred and seventeen gates, earth mounds and bollards, and over four kilometres of fencing. Now, those measures helped achieve a reduction in those targeted hotspots of up to a hundred percent. There are places where they completely eliminated the issue of illegal dumping. Now, illegal dumping is a problem faced by all councils, but not by all councils equally. And I believe this council has a good track record in waste management. We closed down the tip at Lord of the Isle early in the piece, and we moved to the waste transfer station model ahead of other councils. We worked with Surell and Tasman to establish Cobbin, which operates at really good practice. The C cell is also nation-best practice in managing contaminated waste, something that was stored poorly or shipped into the state previously. And this decade, we were the first council in Tasmania to adopt and roll out green waste wheelie bins. I think all Clarence Aldermen are proud to represent a geographically diverse municipality with a CBD, suburbs, shacks and rural areas. However, however, rather, it is the peri-urban fringe which we have a, a lot of illegal dumping occurring in. And a RID squad is the type of mechanism to deal with these sort of hotspots. Now, also, not all councils have hard waste collection. And it seems in recent years that waste from outside our municipality has been added to the collection, basically an impost on Clarence rate payers. Again, this is the sort of issue that the resources of a RID squad, where they're diverted to hotspots or issues as they arise, would be good to deal with. So, I believe it's a sound initiative, and I believe as we're coming up to, you know, with the Waste Strategy Action Plan out for consultation, that this is the opportune moment to step up on this issue, and I seek your support.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, uh, interesting that Alderman Walker went through a number of matters pertaining to, um, this very important matter and, uh, and also the functions that have been actually quoted within the Local Government Act, uh, that was referred to earlier in one, in the discussion. Uh, the, the health and wellbeing of individuals can be definitely incorporated within the three Rs, rates, rubbish and road. So, you know, we can go and make all sorts of stories and so on about this. But nevertheless, the fact of the matter is, though, that, um, in the late eighties, I've made a, a contribution towards the closure of the Lord of the Isle tip. And also, I advocated a regional tip. And to this day, we have a regional tip, even though there are some members that, at this particular point in time, are fairly reluctant to join the brotherhood slash sisterhood of, um, waste strategies, uh, within southern Tasmania. But nevertheless, they'll come on board sooner or later. Notwithstanding that Glenorkie has made a decision, or the Glenorkie council, Mr. Mayor, has made a decision to extend the use of Jackson Street tip for another ten or fifteen years. So, the point about all this is that there needs to be something that can achieve a particular, uh, objective. And that, in this particular case, is to collaborate with the department. Not necessarily pursue it, as it was sort of... Not necessarily pursue it, as it was sort of incorporated within the previous motion, but in fact collaborate with the department to pursue this formation of a reduce illegal dumping squad in southern Tasmania. And that is a great step forward. I was deputy chair of the Southern Waste Strategy Authority for a number of years. And we made a contribution, I believe, a very positive contribution, towards how councils can work together as a group, in particular the southern group. And we achieved a lot, and we had this very strong working relationship with the other southern councils. And as I mentioned, it achieved a great deal. And even to this day, there has been discussion within that, well, current membership of the Southern Tasmanian Councils Association that there needs to focus on, or a strategy in relation to waste strategy. And that is probably one of the key factors that may drive STCA forward, even though the number of members of councils is in fact limited to the extent that Clarence Council has withdrawn. I think Alderman Walker has put up a very good motion, and I believe it's appropriate. And by this council being in concert with the other southern councils, in particular with the government agency, I think this can achieve a lot. And I would like to think that this motion would be carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor, like Alderman James. I do congratulate Alderman Walker for bringing this motion to council because we've had issues ourselves in this council with illegal dumping. I think Alderman Walker's explained to us and had very good notes on why this should be supported. And I think it should be unanimous because, you know, the amount of times we've had cars dumped and other things dumped here. And this, what I like about this squad, it will work across council boundaries. So I think it's a win-win situation.
Look, I thank everybody for their forbearance listening to my speech, as always. But I also want to shout out and commend nineteen eighties Alderman James, a guy who, you know, sounds like good things. Those decisions were quite forward as far as the Lordedale and the regional facility. Might not have seemed so at the time, it was probably not the most expedient thing to do. But where we've landed now as far as the regional facility that we have, we're in a really strong position and foundation to be, you know, sustainably managing waste and dealing with other issues. And as I say, I implore people to think around the fact that the proposal that's out is good from what the government's suggesting around waste, but we don't want the waste levy to be a tax. And if we don't actually come forward in the beginning and say, "This is some of the things that the waste levy should be used for," there's a high risk, that's what it'll end up being. So these squads, as I said, the data's in, the evidence's in from New South Wales, and I seek your support.
Motion is as moved by Alderman Walker, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, nine point three, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the motion standing in my name.
Is that the one that's in the agenda papers, or is there a? Okay, second to Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The genesis of this particular idea is from the discussions relating to housing. And much was made of the housing crisis, to get rooms over people's heads, as we saw again this evening. But the other issue, of course, is the medium-term solution, or if you like, or a longer-term solution, which is the supply of particularly affordable housing. Now, the urban growth boundary is a creature of the southern strategic land use strategy. The southern land use strategy, whatever the acronym can turn out to be. The point with that is that it sets a, tries to control gradual release of residential land. And in that sense, you know, with five-year reviews, with no capacity, as it turns out, to do any incremental justice in the meantime. Now, although it's nice to have five-year reviews, the world doesn't work that way. You know, demand rises and falls. And the point is, is that supply needs to rise and fall. So the issue with it is, is that there's a difference I'd like to point out as the discussions we had earlier today, Mr. Mayor. There's a difference between availability and supply. There are currently available over two and a half thousand, or just under two and a half thousand residential lots in the Clarence municipality. Now, you wouldn't think that'd be much of a supply, that would be much of a supply problem, except the difference between availability and supply is that only one hundred and thirteen of those lots, or less than five percent, have actually been sealed, which is what has to happen before someone can purchase those lots or build on them. So we're having a look at, there's only about, there's a hundred and thirteen throughout the city which are available for someone to buy tomorrow and start building on. So to me, that is a great supply, and precious few of those are in areas that you might consider affordable. So we need some competition, communism might be the better way. Competition is needed to stimulate supply, is to turn availability into supply, and in order to lower prices, because there's very little doubt that much of it is waiting for the market to catch up with it before the investment's made and it turns into supply. Now, housing affordability is a big issue. Nationally, it's a big issue. And there's also an issue with the fact that we have record-low interest rates. Yet, mortgage, household mortgage debt is one of the biggest issues facing this particular country. And we could very well find the case when interest rates rise, as they inevitably must, that we end up with that housing bottom. There's a case study about affordable housing, which is at Atkin Street. This is an area off Rokeby, where there are services and street access at the boundary. But for some strange reason, it falls just outside the urban growth boundary. And this council was very supportive in having to refuse the subdivision application and referring the matter to the TPC pending a boundary adjustment. When the Tasmanian Planning Commission looked at the boundary adjustment, it said it lacked the power to adjust the boundaries and had to refer it back to the minister. The minister's response was, and still was as late as last week, that he had referred the matter to his department to work with the Tasmanian Planning Commission to find a means of, to empower them to make these sorts of adjustments. And in the past, ministers have actually issued ministerial directions to achieve these solutions. But in this particular case, eight months down the track, during the middle of an affordability housing crisis, we are still stuck in limbo. Now, the solution for me is an outer urban growth boundary, which is set at an area where we would never be. You know, the skyline, the high areas, areas where there would never be zone residential. Within that, we should be allowing developments where services are at, where the connection points to services are at the boundary. In this way, you won't get isolated pockets of development with long service requirements. And if they chose to do so, then it would be the owner's responsibility to get those services to the boundary line. But situations like Atkin Street abound. And if we can find a developer who wants to go in there, wants to tap into that lower affordability housing of the market, then they should be encouraged to do so. The final point is that Greater Hobart Committee, Mr. Mayor, has recently been established. And one of the things it is empowered to do is to make corrections likely to do.
Hold it. Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm a great believer in the urban growth boundary in that I think it serves its purpose in preventing ad hoc development in places whereas, as Alderman has mentioned, there's no services, there's no capacity to build. However, I do think it's important that it's reviewed and five years, when it does get reviewed on a five-year basis, which it doesn't always, is actually a fundamentally important thing. Secondment patterns are changing. Desires for where you can live, what kind of living people want to do is changing. Without reviewing the urban growth boundary, we can't take those conditions into account. It is a fundamental, but it still needs to be looked at and considered. And I do understand, as Alderman Mulder has mentioned, that this is on the work programme for the Greater Hobart Council, which will presumably be set up relatively soon. But I do think it's important to support this motion because it will reinforce to that community how important we as a council believe this review to be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just for everybody's information, it is actually the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy. So Alderman Mulder, when you need help, you can just have a look at the document.
Through the chair, please, Alderman Mulder.
Mr. Mayor, when Alderman Mulder names out with the title of the document, he can actually have a look at my copy. I think it's really important to note that this strategy actually came into being on the twenty-seventh of October, two thousand and eleven. And it's a strategy for the years two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirty-five. Along with it was actually a document titled, "The Process Forward: Implementing and Monitoring the Regional Land Use Strategy for Southern Tasmania, June two thousand and eleven." And what this document actually dealt with was, amongst other things, the ongoing review and maintenance of the strategy. Supposedly, there were to be five-year level reviews. That has not occurred since two thousand and eleven, so there has not been a review. I actually noted that Alderman Mulder's initial motion, as far as I was concerned, I was not going to support it because what Alderman Mulder was suggesting was that it actually be removed, the urban growth boundary. And as Alderman Chong has said, as far as this strategy is concerned, the urban growth boundary is a very important aspect of the strategy. I still can't support this alternative motion because as far as I'm concerned, it's not about simply reviewing the urban growth boundary. It is about reviewing the whole strategy. So many things have actually changed since two thousand and eleven. In planning terms, we now actually have, or are working towards a statewide planning scheme. As Alderman Mulder has actually said, we also have the state government working with us in relation to a city act. And also, we have a federal city deal. So I actually believe that we need to be looking at reviewing the whole strategy urgently because the urban growth boundary, whilst it is an important facet of the strategy, is only one part of the strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. In actual fact, I do agree with Alderman Von Berdo exactly the same way. I think the whole thing needs looking at because here we're sort of just rushing, we're just rushing off. We're rushing off again, we're authorising the general manager, refer to the matter to the minister for planning. Well, if Alderman Mulder would like an amendment, I'd rather see it come back to a workshop and give us all a chance to have a look at this. And I mean, it's only going to take, you know, a couple of months for us to go through it and then go ahead and authorise the general manager, the matter to the minister for planning and Department of Justice and Policy and all that. But I think we need to have a look first because one thing I also was talking about tonight is some areas similar to what you have said, we may need to go a bit higher than we have been going. And I don't mean right in the centre of the city, but some of the areas further out. But I don't want to push the urban growth boundary out so we are committing more funds to put infrastructure in and you've got more cars on the road and nothing's going to happen. That's why I think this motion is a bit rushed. I'm saying, Alderman, if you want an amendment, I'd bring it back to a workshop first to give us a chance. Yeah, sorry, Mayor, through you to Alderman Mulder, Mayor. That for me to support it, I'd rather see this come back to a workshop, a bit like Alderman Von Berdo. The way it's worded, I cannot support it at the moment.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Thank you. Look, I'm wondering if the, through you, of course, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if the mover of the motion would entertain an amendment, keeping the first sentence that is, "That in order to increase the supply of residential land, council supports an urgent and fundamental review of the urban growth boundary policy as part of a wider review of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, particularly insofar as it relates to the city of Clarence."
Look, he only gets an opportunity during his reply to answer that rhetorical question. You are, of course, entitled to move an amendment yourself.
But they can't agree to it.
That's right.
Yeah, so Alderman Mulder and the second, it could agree to incorporate.
You're quite right, thank you, Alderman James.
Thanks very much.
Alderman Mulder, would you be prepared to take that on board?
I would have amendments acceptable, please.
Thank you, and the second?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies, Alderman Walker, you're right on board.
If you say, possibly. In some ways, I don't want to support this because it's a watered-down version of the Firebrand original version. And I think the spirit of that, on the spirit basis, that should be supported. Now, what is the intent of the urban growth boundary? Well, one would say that it's about strategic land release, that we don't end up with rubbish trucks spending eight minutes going up a dirt road to the single house at one point and then down the next one. Now, that might be the intention, but the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And basically, what we ended up with was a lowest common denominator, US-style consensus around Southern Tasmanian council authority members all magically getting a little piece of growth in their purr, whether it be necessary or not, whether it be strategic or not. Apparently it was, apparently that was the paragon and as good as a growth boundary can get. I just don't believe it. I really don't. And where we've ended up with is a situation where people will say, well, there's potentially, there's five thousand blocks out there that are zoned. Well, there's not five thousand core fleets for sale on it. So the impact is that the price of land increases as it's drip-fed out. We're not getting the housing at the same rates, and so the cost of housing goes up. I think that it's not unreasonable, at least strive for some of what we got to enjoy through our childhood. I don't think that an average family on an average income, that it should be seen as luxurious or decadent to have a backyard. I think that's a choice that should be out there and embraced. There was certainly a pretty relaxed growth boundary in the seventies and eighties that people in our communities got to enjoy. We want a system that allows for choice because we have the issue around plenty of people in our established suburbs wanting to downsize but stay within their own community, and there aren't the options, so they're sitting in their four-bedroom houses that are way too big. So I do support this process because I think it will lead to more sensible relaxation. I think it will help to deal with the housing crisis. I think that it will put downward pressure, and I think it will also discourage some of the drip-feeding. I think if people see a wider, more rational urban growth boundary, that there won't be so much land banking and lack of supply. So I do support the motion, and I encourage my colleagues to support the amended motion as well.
Look, in that case, what I'll do is before calling for it, write a reply. Some of us may not have picked up on the details of that amendment, so I'll just ask the general manager to read out the change on what's on the board there. What's on the board is a PDF, so we're not able to amend it quickly, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion A would now read that, "In order to increase the supply of residential land, council supports an urgent and fundamental review of the urban growth boundary policy as part of a wider review of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, particularly insofar as it relates to the city of Clarence."
Thanks, and the rest are the same. Alderman Mulder, write a reply.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of clarifications. Yes, the original one was the removal of the urban growth boundary, and although there was some support for that, it was a Firebrand one, I think, is the. was some support for that, it was a firebrand one, I think is the term that was used. The amendment, the motion was then amended and was circulated over the weekend to be not the review of the boundaries, but if you actually have a look at the policy motion, it talks about review of the urban growth boundary policy. So if, you know, if others need help with reading, I too am available to assist. The point though is that...
Touche.
The point though is...
I'll take it down with representative mail.
Of course, it's representative of the council. So I made the adjustments because I heard, I knew people had concerns with completely removing the boundary. There was some discussion with the second of the motion, which finally got us to the area that we got to, so that we aren't necessarily preempting the result of that review. And it is a policy review, not a boundary review that's been proposed. And as for the amendment, although I accepted it because it was necessary to sort of hopefully get some support that I'd probably lost, that, that function is actually now one that the Greater Hobart City Bill, which is in Parliament at the moment in its first reading and is on the notice paper, actually contains a work programme that must look at the strategic land use strategy. This is the reason that I pushed it to the Greater Hobart Committee as a place to go because that is the body that will do the review that everyone says is so much needed and as the motion now actually calls for. So in a sense, the amendment was redundant, but I'm happy to bring it on to add some clarity as to what's going on here. But I do urge support because I think it's important, as we've put out, there's things called land banking, which is just another way of availability but not supply. And it's really that supply thing that I want to get. And the case study I used is a classic example of where services are at the boundary, yet you have this artificial constraint on the release of land. Someone who has land in the bank but can't take it out because of this impediment. So I urge your support for this motion because I think it is a matter of urgency that we do increase the supply rather than the availability of land, and that the best way of doing that is to throw a bit of competition in the market by increasing the potential supply.
So the motion is Alderman Mulder's amended alternate motion? All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Well, that's, that goes without stating.
It's gone to issue a press release.
Moving on to item ten, reports from outside bodies. Ten point one from single and joint authorities. The, I've asked that the STCA be dropped off this list of standing motions since we're no longer a member. Copping refuse disposal site, joint authority, anything to report, Alderman Walker?
Thank you. There's nothing either to report on the Tasmanian Water Corporation, and I will put the Greater Hobart Committee on the standing list of reports since the, it's actually now waiting for an amendment from the upper house to be ticked off in the lower house, and I expect that to be happening as a matter of course, very soon, next sitting day. Right, moving on to ten point two, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. Are there any? Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I take the minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee for mine, and also a report on the decisions from the local government authority generally last week?
Reports. Moving on to reports from officers, eleven point one is that the information contained in the weekly briefing reports, the seventeenth, twenty-fourth of June, the first of July, be noted. Thank you, Alderman James. Seconda? Thank you, Alderman Piers. Alderman James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I refer council to the weekly briefing report of the first of July and on page five. I've got my glasses tonight, six. Who's got the hat? With regard to the park at Blossom Crescent, Cambridge, my question through you to Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, there appears to be a blowout in the actual cost of this project, and total cost on page eight refers to an increase of up to five hundred and ten thousand. On the second page of the report, it refers to, amongst other things, that council would be seeking from the TTCF, Tasmanian Community Fund, some funding, and in, in order to procure and install a series of public art elements across the park. So my question is, within the five hundred and ten thousand, is it intended that between twenty and seventy? Maybe earmarked for some art elements as distinct from what would normally be the case of having the real nuts and bumps, we'll use that term again, in relation to a park for a family and other users of that, of that park, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one on notice, and I'll check our budget estimates, and I'll advise council through a briefing if that's okay.
Graham, second is reference to the weekly briefing report of the seventeenth of June and the Woodhurst Road reconstruction. Again, Mr. Graham, on page eight, you referred to, amongst other things, and I quote from this penultimate paragraph, when you say that a letter to residents has been sent, offering them an opportunity to raise their concerns or question below before the design is finalised. And I'm sure you're aware of Rick Mecklenburg's communication to us. And my question, yeah, and my question through you, Mr. Mayor, is in fact that have you disregarded any of those comments that have been made by Mr. Mecklenburg and the residents insofar as their request for some speed humps in order to provide some safety measures, whereas the council seems to be hell-bent on traffic enumeration and speed checks? So have you taken in consideration a number of comments and representations made by a group of residents in Seven Mile Beach as far as other safety measures which they believe are more appropriate than just speed checks and accounts?
I might point out, Alderman James, that that is subject to a formal merril response, which we copied to all the Alderman. But having laid that background, I'm quite happy to ask Mr. Graham if there's any advanced thinking on that merril response.
Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At the phase at the moment, we've done some concept designs for the project, and we're seeking community feedback before we've finalised design to ensure that all persons within that area have an opportunity to provide feedback to us to ensure our design meets their requirements. In terms of the request for speed humps, it's gone through our internal traffic meeting group, and we're investigating at the moment by obtaining speed data through the area. No formal decision has been made either way, and we're assessing all feedback at the moment.
That'll be reflected in the response that comes.
Notion of speed humps?
Wouldn't happen. Not without a lot of thought, Alderman James. Are there any other concerns about the weekly briefing reports? And that case put the motion that the information contained in them be noted. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. And there's nothing at eleven point two. I'd like to advise that council now intends to set as a planning authority under Luca. And we move to eleven point three point one. I'll just wait for Mr. Ford to join us. Eleven point three point one is a development application at seventeen Coventry Rise, Harrow for a single dwelling. Thank you, Alderman Walker. Have a second, please. Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Walker. Alderman Newington. Other speakers? Put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point two is a development application at two Burgundy Road, Harrow, for a front fence.
I'm more than happy to move that.
You're moving the refusal. Do we have a second, please? Thanks, Alderman Mulder. Alderman James?
I believe that the officers have thoroughly researched this and applied the principles in relation to, I don't know, the checklist that applies within the planning department. I seek council support.
Yes, now, I think, although low as I am to do much to interfere with people's right to do what they want on their land, I think there comes the streetscape and the citiescape, and I think we've got some very good and some very lenient fencing provisions, but I think to build this sort of fence may be just less than aesthetic. The other element, of course, is that not far away is a fence that actually complies, as per the officer's report. And to my shape and form, if we have any power, it's exactly that sort of fence, although approved and quite okay under the planning scheme, is the last thing we want.
Alderman Newington?
All I won't be supporting this one, Mark. I think the fence doesn't look much different to the other fences that are shown in the report, and I personally think that we spend thirteen most time telling people what they can and can't do, and I think it would look dead out of place. It's not going to harm anyone else, so I just really don't understand why we lock those silly things back.
Other speakers? Alderman Blomley?
Mr. Mayor, mine had been making a minute of time. Like Alderman Newington, I have some significant reservations with this, with this recommendation. As I understand it, and please, I'm very welcome to be corrected if I'm incorrect here, but my understanding is the reason why this is being not bad is that it's a first fence proposed for that street, even though there are other similar fences of a similar height in neighbouring streets. This is the first, this on the corner, therefore the first property, that's not correct, my...
So Alderman Blomley, keep your eye, please.
Yeah, well, that was my understanding, and I actually think that, yeah, two point four metres in this instance is not inappropriate, and therefore I can't, can't support this recommendation.
Sorry, did you want to speak to the motion? Yeah, sorry.
And you call it on the right reply?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'll be very brief. Look, we have a debate on a lot of issues, and the officers have gone into great detail here to emphasise some of the key aspects in relation to this, and it's not in keeping with the streetscape nor in a particular area. So I think it's important that we do take note of the experts, and from time to time, obviously, we can query it or make some comment in relation to it. But at the end of the day, on this particular issue, they have provided their judgment, their recommendation, and I think we should support it. I seek council support.
The recommendation is for refusal for several reasons. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Eleven point three point three is a development application for seventy-one Crumorne Avenue for a single dwelling. Alderman Blomley, thank you. Alderman Chong, seconda?
Mr. Mayor, is through the officer's recommendation.
Other speakers? Okay, let's put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point four is a development application at ten Portella Close Sanford for a single dwelling.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, it actually is not a single dwelling, it's an outbuilding. So there's a typo there, and I'll move it.
Mr. Ford, are you able to amplify this for us?
Yes. I'm, I'm, my next statement, the use, the use class is residential, and under the use class is a use definition which is a single dwelling, which also contains associated outbuildings. The, the use is a single dwelling.
Were you moving the motion, Alderman Von Verdo?
I will.
Thank you.
For the outbuilding. Not the single dwelling.
To be quite clear, you are moving a motion for a single dwelling. Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Kendy. Alderman Von Verdo?
No, thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's self-explanatory.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Ford for managing to so successfully expand the outhouse into a dwelling.
I take it there are no other speakers or need for a write a reply, Alderman Von Verdo?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll put the motion which is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point five is a development application at nine Yachtsman Way, Trendmere, for two multiple dwellings and an additional crossover. Happy to take a move and a seconda? Thank you, Alderman Newington, seconda? Well, Alderman Walker, thank you. Alderman Newington?
Well, I'll keep it short and sweet. I've obviously jumped through the hoops, I've dealt with all the conditions, and I think that it's the right thing for us to do to approve it. Fits him with the other places around here, and I can't tell this one we wouldn't, so I asked that everyone support this development application.
In line with the officer's advice relating to the contempt, the current interim planning scheme.
Take it, there's no further debate, so the motion is recommendation for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Eleven point three point six, Alderman Piers, did you want to...
Before you actually call that item, on, on second thoughts, although clearly I haven't got a conflict of pecuniary interest in this particular matter, given the nature of the email and all the rest of it, I fear that I may have, I may be guilty of being seen as having prejudged the matter, so I think on that basis I ought to withdraw.
Alderman Mulder? Eleven point three point six is a development application at two eight Bayfield Street, Rossney Park for a change of use to fitness centre. Alderman Blomley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd seek to move the alternative motion standing in my name and circulated to colleagues.
Do we have a second for that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before us this evening is the DA to transform what has been for some eight years now a vacant space into a pilates studio, what can most appropriately be described as our CBD here in Rossney Park. As we know, from the report prepared by expert planning officers, the sticking point here, as in so many similar applications, concerns parking, and in particular the cashing lieu policy of this council. Mr. Mayor, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that this council, sooner rather than later, needs to take all appropriate steps to overhaul the current parking policy and cashing level approach so that we actively encourage commerce and economic activity in our city. In fact, when I consider this council's strategic plan, where we strive to be a prosperous city, with the associated strategic goal being Clarence will develop its economy, improve prosperity, expand both the level and equity of personal opportunity within its communities, it is evident that the proposal before us this evening ticks all those boxes. Further as our...
I just, just need to add a note of caution here that we are sitting as a planning authority, not an economic development authority, and we need to couch debate for and against in terms of the planning and...
Mr. Mayor, I thank you, and I will note that our officers are doing their job and following the policy as it presently stands. And so here we are now being asked to exercise our discretion. Mr. Mayor, having read the officer's report and visited the site of the proposed pilates studios, I'd like to make a few points. Firstly, as we're told, the building is serviced by twelve-car parking spaces located at the rear of the building. It must be noted that the building is not fully tenanted, well, clearly the proposed area of the DA in question, but along with that, there are other vacant spaces within the complex that clearly all twelve spaces are not currently utilised. Secondly, the landlord was bemused to note that the current permit indicates the subject tenancy... Secondly, the landlord was bemused to note that the current permit indicates that the subject tenancy has been approved as an office. As for some time, this space is retail, and for those of us who can recall, it was a fabricay outlet. However, as I mentioned earlier, it has been vacant now for some eight years. Mr. Mayor, in seeking the support of colleagues for this alternative motion this evening, I submit the following reasons. There are sufficient car parking spaces in the subject area, and the core business operating hours are not the same as neighbouring businesses. As with all pilates studios with reformers or beds, and it's obvious, Mr. Mayor, that's all pretty new to me, there are a limited number on account of the size required and group and class sizes. It is anticipated that there will be a maximum class size of 12, most likely 8, starting at 6am for an hour-long session, with classes available to run through to about 2pm, and personal training or one-on-one sessions will occur. Having until recently worked in Rossney Park and parking in the council's car park behind the DA's subject site, I can attest to there being an abundance of available car parking spots at 6am on any day of the week. This new business, rather than reducing available car parking spaces, will ensure better utilisation of this council asset, as the core operating hours are not the same as neighbouring businesses. And as an example, Alderman Pearce's business doesn't open in store until 10am. Mr. Mayor, as an act of goodwill and eagerness to get this business up and running, the landlord has offered a cash-in-loo payment of one car, for one car space, at $12,000. I am informed this can be made available to council right away, and in all the circumstances, I believe this is a fantastic outcome. This is a win-win situation for all parties, and as such, I seek the support of colleagues.
Second?
Yeah, I'd like to commend Alderman Blomley on the way he well researched and explained the reason to support it, I mean. I agree with Alderman Blomley in relation to reviewing our cash-in-loo situation, not only certainly in Belreuth and to the Belreuth Village. But in relation to that, I mean, look, I can't see how this had any impact on the car parking and the requirements, and I never struggle to get a car parked in and around this land, so I don't think... The last thing we need to be doing is putting in place on new businesses out there trying to do stuff, and there's one thing we need to encourage, that's more fitness centres. So, I think, you know, I'd certainly like to see more, and I mean, look, it's great that they're having a go, and I think we should be, you know, more than supportive of people that are out there trying to start a business and provide activities that can help the wellbeing and health of our community. So I certainly support the development application and this amendment.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, look, we did have a situation in Richmond recently where, in fact, the argument that was put forward for council to consider was the fact that there was existing car parking in the immediate vicinity of that development. However, it was pointed out, and I think the planners did the right thing in their recommendation, to refuse that particular application because there was insufficient car parking. And also, in the recommendation, there is a knocked-out clause on page 107, and you can read it there for all intents and purposes, and that is to say that a condition, if in the event that the appeal, of an appeal, council would be prepared to consent a permit condition for cash-in-loo for three car parking spaces. Now, that is something that the council is prepared to take on board, because they believe, I think, the planners believe in their recommendation to us, that the council has a very, very strong case to put forward a particular proposal such as this, to refuse the application because it does not comply. It does not comply with the interim planning scheme, it does not comply with the number of car parking spaces, and by one of the ordamens saying that they're prepared to provide one cash-in-loo for one of the car parking spaces, and that is for $12,000, that just doesn't go anywhere in relation to what we need to fulfil as part of our code. Now, if we are going to every now and again come here and say that, look, there are car parking spaces in this immediate vicinity, then that, I don't think, holds water at all because of the nature of where the policy is quite clear, and it's spelt out by the officers in putting forward this particular recommendation. If you're going to start to relax the car parking code in this particular CBD area, then you are going to open a can of worms, because there's going to be an avalanche of other business persons coming forward and saying, look, you granted for that particular start-up business, why not? If we have a change of use, and this is basically what it is, a change of use, therefore you should provide us with the same sort of benefit. If you're going to open up the floodgates, then you're basically going to have to say, well, a press has been set in that particular case, and 100 metres just around the corner, they are going to say the same thing. We have to be strong on this, and it's very easy to come out and say, look, it's a new business, it's starting up, there's additional parking spaces nearby. If we've got a code, then we should stick to it, and it's in accordance with our planning scheme, and the officers, again, are the experts, because they've done their assessment, and they've recommended this for refusal. Mr. Mayor, I will not support the alternative motion, and if that is lost, I will move the officer's recommendation.
Other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, I also will not be supporting this alternative motion. I actually believe that the officer's recommendation and the report is very clearly set out. I think it's important to note that it's been said that this business is different to other businesses. I don't see that. I actually have been in touch with the applicant today, and the applicant actually will have classes from 5.30am, then 6.30am, then 7.30am, 9.30am, 12 known, 1pm, and then individual sessions, and then classes again from 5.30, 6.30, 7.30, and 8.30 in summer. And sorry, the 5.30 in the morning was in summer. So this business is actually going to be operating all day. So I don't understand why it is seen as being different to other businesses that are operating. The classes are going to be for 50 minutes in length. One thing that was interesting, that was noted in the officer's report, was the change over times and parking. And I certainly know, frequenting a gym in Clarence, that the change over time is chaotic. So I feel that this particular alternative motion has not looked at that aspect. And I actually feel that this is about consistency and equity, and I support very much what Alderman James has said. That if we are going to have a policy, and I realise there's discretion, but it's, if you like, to use a phrase that we use quite often, it's not unfettered discretion. I actually feel that we need to be as fair and consistent as we possibly can be. And for that reason, I won't be supporting the alternative motion, but would support the officer's recommendation.
Look, the fact that I'm a small business myself, and neither here nor there, I'm sitting in the planning authority, although, you know, a level, consistent playing field, I think, is really the way that people would want councils to operate from, rather than a somewhat inconsistent tilted approach. It has been the case in the past that I have gone in hard to reduce the number of parking spaces in applications. Belreuth Health Hub comes to mind. Now, in that case, and in each case, I do so when I believe there's a clear and present reason that the officers have over-calculated the number. That was quite simple for me to do in Belreuth Health Hub. Lots of allied health and the absolute maximum they can, they can, you know, the time intervals are set by Medicare and other things as to what they could be. So I guess if this application was to come back with operating hours conditioned that were outside the times of business, when the car park's being used, that would be a different kettle of fish. But that's not what was before us. So I guess when we're thinking about parking, you have to ask is, well, what is the alternative to that? Now, if we're starting to do this, obviously new applications will want to take a similar approach, but I can tell you what, if you're somebody sitting on a premises in Bayfield Street and you've paid $80,000 two years ago for parks, why wouldn't you have grounds to want to come back to council for a retrospective rebate? Furthermore, how do you want to fund car parking? I'm personally, and I've stood up, as the mayor and others might remember in 2011, been vigorously against paid parking, for short-term parking within the Rossney and other areas. I believe that is a disincentive to business, and I believe that we have the scope and the ability, maybe not for, you know, all-day parking, but certainly for the short two to three hours, we should be aiming to turn parks over and not be bludgeoning people like some other councils that recently raised their parking by 14%, I want to do. So are you for paid parking? I'm not. Do you believe in the principle that it should be on the general residential rate payer to be funding multi-story car parks? I haven't come to that. I'm operating in the sphere we have now, understanding what council's done in previous times, and the arguments to date haven't actually convinced me that the calculations by the officers were wrong. So I'm in a position where I'll be inclined to support the officer's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank colleagues for their contribution tonight. And in response to some of the comments made, I'd just make the point that it's all well and good to be fair and consistent. However, it's not good to be consistently unfair. And in particular, Mr. Mayor, I'd just draw colleagues' attention to the information that we discussed on Friday, and I alluded to in my opening remarks today, Mr. Mayor, and covered off quite well in my opening remarks, and that is that the tenancy currently has an allocation of two parking spaces available on site. The existing approved use, as an office generates seven car parking spaces based on the tenancy floor area. And as Alderman James correctly pointed out, this is a change of use application. So therefore, under the parking table of the Parking Nexus Code, the proposed use as a fitness centre would generate additional parking of three spaces with no specific requirements for gym. So they've got two already allocated to the site, they've got seven that's already there, that's nine. They're saying here, they'll pony up the cash for one, and that sort of covers your obligations as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Mayor. This is about utilising the parking that we have available as well. It's close to the bus mall, as we all are very, very aware. Public transport, clients are a big user of public transport and bicycles to this, particularly to the current studio in Hobart CBD. From my perspective, Mr. Mayor, this is a no-brainer, and it would be an absolute disappointment, Mr. Mayor, if we say no to this very fair proposal from the proponent this evening.
Motion before the chair is circulated by Alderman Blomley. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Alderman James? Do we have a second? Alderman Von Berta, thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, so I'll put the motion, the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Could we invite Alderman Pearce and Molder back in, please? Alderman Von Berta, did you want to take leave for this next motion? Motion is 11.3.7, an application subdivision, 3178 South Arm Road, South Arm, four-lot subdivision. Alderman Newington, do we have a second, please? Alderman Chong, thank you. Alderman Newington?
Well, I need to put my sort of position on this all stuff pretty clearly, and then it's gone through the process. Seems like it's, you know, a quick development. I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't accept the officer's recommendation in the sense.
Motion for approval, subject to conditions and vice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, and that concludes our business as a planning authority. Could we recall Alderman Von Berta, please? Moving on to governance, 11.7.1. There are two parts to this, A and B, I'll deal with them separately. So could I call on, thank you, Alderman Molder for part A, and second, Alderman James, thank you. Alderman Molder, do you wish to speak to it?
Thank you. Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I think I'll try not to go through some of the issues, because I think we came to the pre-issues, because I think they are adequately covered in the presentation. The fact is that the surveyor general and the nomenclature board have now made it absolutely clear that the prospect of a new virtual micro-sub in this particular area is not on, and I noticed from the rules that we've received that these things are only created in terms of absolute necessity, and I think a number of terms we've probably failed to reach there. It suffice to say that, I've been really careful to say that council didn't approve this decision. In all my consultations and talk with people, I have actually attached the decision of council, which was to support it in principle and to send it out to public consultation. So those are the two things. Now, it's quite clear that as a result of the advice we've received and of some of the community feedback, that rescission of that decision is the most appropriate method, and I'd like to just foreshadow the recommendation briefly, because I would like to talk to that, perhaps start a debate. So at this stage, I would request a report of 11.7, a support for 11.7, the one recommendation, A.
Second was Alderman James, and just to be clear, we are talking about the rescission only at this point?
That's what I wanted to actually keep in mind, Mr. Mayor, when I was addressing this, as second. I think the gentleman who spoke this evening summed it up admirably. I seek council support.
Other speakers?
I supported the original motion, and I just want to put a few things on record about that. I think someone mentioned before the road to Helvinge pay for good intentions. I weighed my vote on that topic, because I had it ringing in my ears from the election that the community wanted to be consulted on these sort of things. We might have walked into a door on this one, and I'm happy, and I think more elected people should do this, and say that I've got it wrong, and I'm happy to support recommendation tonight, A tonight. And I might even put on record, you know, my regret at the angst this has caused some people in the community.
Right reply, Alderman Molder? So the motion is that council rescinds its decision on the 8th of April, 11.7.4. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Now, Alderman Molder, you foreshadowed that you wanted to move part B, which comprises four parts?
The motion is as on the board, I'm not too sure whether the one amendment...
Except that it's recommending option three, I think...
It was option, no, it's option two now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I took some pains after the workshop on Friday to make sure that we had the option two. Mayor, there's much... Mr. Mayor, um, as much as I was inclined to do nothing, I think now that the time has transpired. Um, and that although the community consultation is mentioned there, it's, it's important for people to note, and I'm referring to um, three one on page one fifty-six, what the community consultation actually involves. Evidence of consultation with owners whose property addresses would change and evidence of support for the proposal from the majority of the affected owners. I'm not too quite sure what A and B do, so you might ask whether that's general community consultation or whether the whole of the community consultation is related only to those people who own the land.
Did, uh, I missed the second for this. Thank you, Alderman Walker. Thank you. Please continue.
So um, as a result of that, what's happened is that the options three were developed. One, two and three were developed um, in accordance with the rules. And a lot of those rules relate around containment of suburbs where you don't have a street which has the same street name but with consecutive numbers in that street that are in different suburbs. And that is where the whole postcode issue starts to come into. So if we had done nothing, we would find ourselves um, in a position where Skillian Road would be exactly that situation where the same street would be in two different postcodes. And now that may, or may not, have an impact upon Australia Post and its willingness to retain the seven oh one eight postcode for the area. So options one, two and three, uh, and originally three were occupied. But options one and both options two avoid that situation because the streets, that, because the boundaries are drawn where streets intersect to make sure that, you know, that, that all the houses in a street are in a suburb and therefore in a postcode. Option one, of course, is um, would, would be the least. Uh, option two, um, I think makes some sense because we are still on the top of the hill and we're not cascading down. Option three, which is what the developers originally preferred, ran into that old risk of running right down the side of Ropeby, right down into an area where um, we would be creating social isolation instead of social integration. So I had a bit of a chat to some of the developers and I must say that um, the, the person who stood the most to gain by the full option three was very amenable to the idea that perhaps option two, which only includes part of his land, but makes a very, very natural boundary to the new, to the, to the Hara suburb in the fact that everything on Tollard Drive is in Ropeby, everything from Ploughman's Road to the west is actually uh in Hara. Now, that would give some comfort to the people in the Hara Gardens. And it would also avoid, as we saw tonight, the insult that many people in Ropeby feel that part of what is their community and the potential growth of their community is now being hived off into another postcode. So it's about, it's about social integration, I think, which actually allows, which, which allows eventually, I think, if you look at the street layout and all the rest of it, virtually a seamless integration between Hara and Ropeby. Um, and, and that is the area where I think that um, it's good social policy. So can I commend the um, I'd like to commend the uh, the developers, particularly those uh, from Tranmere Point Proprietary Limited, who have seen the wisdom of their ways and if you um, see the letter and that uh, that was sent to us and perhaps I should place it on the record. Dear sir, I refer to the three options for review of boundaries that are to be presented at the meeting of Clarence Council on Monday the eighth of May. Having considered the options, we are of the view that option two is the preferred adjustment to the Hara Ropeby boundary from both a logical and importantly, from a social policy perspective. And I'd like to just commend them for taking that particular approach on, on this particular issue. Um, but um, a- a- and you may say, why are we, why are we doing anything with these things? Well, I think I've explained it and also the fact that the community consultation isn't quite what we originally thought when we moved this motion. It's actually much, much narrower than that. And I'm afraid that uh, the reality is, is that um, the landowners, in this case, two or three developers are really um, hold the whip hand when it comes to this sort of consultation. So um, we really do need the crockery. Now, it's easy to paint developers as greedy and all those sorts of things. Um, but the nature of the fact is, the nature of business is that um, they are in private enterprise and it is their job to do the best they can. But it is really good to see people with a social conscience who come to these sorts of conclusions. So I commend the motion.
Uh, thank you. Look, I didn't speak around the rescission motion, but I think it's important to note, um, whilst this journey might be somewhat novel, I think that the end point is, is going to be um, quite an advantage and, and, and quite a settling of a, a, a geographical location in Clarence that hasn't been well-defined uh over time and has sort of uh, informally evolved. So um, I did support the rescission motion, um, but I would also put on record that um, the nomenclature board hadn't really uh, detailed or named up processes around things when we uh, first sat on this matter. And I think it was good that we did actually um, start to look at clarification around an area that's been a little bit nebulous with naming. So um, option B is fairly well-defined, uh, and I think it's the best outcome in the way forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it is interesting that um, some of the comments that have been made and the social isolation by one alderman and then what leads to social integration, on the other hand. Now, I, I dispute that. I, I just don't think that is the case at all. What we have here is, and I don't want you all to jump up on the spot and start accusing me of being anti-development, because my track record over the years has been, has been quite definite, particularly in, in the case of Glebe Hill. Glebe Hill, I was one of those uh, uh councillors, Alderman at the time, that actually supported Glebe Hill, uh, and it was a tough go to get it through the council, Alderman Blomley. Now, at the, at the same time...
Through the chair and please...
Through, through the chair, through the chair, through the chair. Now, what, what this leads to is that there's no community consultation outside these boundaries that have been proposed within one, two and three. There's no doubt about that. One of the issues that has been bombarding this council over the years is Glebe Hill two development in the Ropeby area of Pass Road. If one, two or three get up and okay, it's been moved at number two, be the best, well, the option, then what that leads to is that those residents who've been arguing over the years to have the boundary of Glebe Hill, which is currently uh, obviously on the western side of, of um, of Pass Road, integrate Glebe Hill two within the other area on the opposite side of, of Pass, of Pass Road. They don't get a Guernsey in this, nothing. They don't get a say in this at all. Because within this particular motion, even though it hasn't been spelt out uh, clearly when it's talking about community consultation, no way in the world, no way in the world are those persons that actually live within the Ropeby Glebe Hill uh subdivision will get a say in this. So isn't that unfair? Isn't that unfair in the circumstances to be able to do that? It's okay for the developers to say, look, we've, we've moved in particular your direction and making uh, stage two as the, probably the appropriate means for them to extend and therefore have uh, their land earmarked in seven oh uh, uh, seven zero one eight. But what about the other people? And in fairness, if the boundary had have gone down, is it Stokel Creek or, or one of the creeks on the uh, eastern side of Pass Road? Now, if it had have gone there and been incorporated perhaps in, in, in um, in um, mark two of the plan, then of course, I would be one of the first to jump up and say, yes, we're finally giving them a chance to have their say. But in this, no way in the world, Uncle Mary, Uncle Terry, there is no way in the world will they be able to have their say. And that's the whole point of the exercise. And I cannot support it. Because one of the um, presenters this evening, members of the public, was quite clear that they didn't really want to go into the seven zero one eight area. And uh, and mark two of this is clearly taking a hunk out of Ropeby uh proper to be incorporated within this new area that's being proposed under mark two or, or um, attachment two as per the officer's recommendation. In fairness, you know, we've really made a, a muck-up of this from day one and now we're trying to sort of, you know, pull in a little bit of credibility on the issue. But I don't think we will get any credibility on this issue unless the consultation incorporates the uh, western side of Pass Road. Because already there have been rumours and there have been comments made that if a sales agent purports to uh, sell land and doesn't designate that uh, area of Glebe Hill mark two within, on the eastern side of Pass Road, then they could be uh, taken to uh, the appropriate uh tribunal and therefore down through it.
Other speakers? Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to, just to clarify a few things and clean up a couple of comments that we made this evening. They just aren't quite correct. And the first one, of course, is that of postcodes. Postcodes have nothing to do with this council, have nothing to do with the nomenclature board, have everything to do with Australia Post. That is the one and only authority that determines what a postcode is. The mover of this part of the motion actually asked a question of the Valuer General just at this workshop here uh, some weeks ago. The Valuer General was quite clear. The advice in our offices, uh, it, it has been crystal clear. Australia Post is the only organisation that determines whether a, a property is in seven zero one eight or seven zero one nine. And you know what? They could do it tomorrow morning. They could change it tomorrow morning and it would have not one iota, not one iota of impact of what, what we decide this evening. Nothing at all. The nomenclature board is responsible for suburb names. And as we know, they wrote to this organisation and they said, listen, sadly, when you moved this motion the eighth of April, uh, our rules changed. The goal posts changed. However, while you're at it, this is something that we've been wanting to look at now for some time. There's a morphous mass of Hara, Glebe Hill, through to Ropeby there. We need to clear it up. We need to clean it up. We need some definite boundaries. Thank you for uh, taking that first step. Then they thought, well, what is community consultation actually involved? Well, community consultation, as we now know, involves those landowners affected, directly affected. In my view, we had no option. We were duty-bound under the rules that existed at that time that we're aware, sorry, the rules that we were aware of at the eighth of April. We were approached. There was a process that we had to follow. Now, since that time, we've discovered uh, that uh, the nomenclature board processes had altered. And as a result of that, here we are tonight, having rescinded that eighth April uh, decision, which I fully support. It was the right decision tonight to rescind that motion. This is a positive step forward and after uh, all the unfortunate um, feelings, uh, the unfortunate misinformation that somehow has permeated throughout our community, it's good that this is a positive step forward. And uh, therefore, I'm very happy uh, to support uh, this part of the motion tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Blomley. Other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Um, I won't be supporting the motion tonight because I have yet to be convinced of the need for a boundary change. Um, we haven't had representation from the community. In fact, we've had just the opposite. So we've been approached by three people, um, not the whole community. I don't believe that there is sufficient um, interest in changing the suburb. I was heartened by the speakers tonight saying that they are proud to live in Ropeby and I hope that the developers will also be proud to have their land for sale in Ropeby. In fact, I've been browsing real estate dot com a bit recently and I noticed that there are some houses for sale that say, address available and application, um, which I think is extremely deceitful because they often turn out to be in Glebe Hill in that area. And I think, as our speakers have said tonight, they should be proud to have land in that area. So I will not be supporting the motion.
Yeah, I'll certainly be supporting this. I mean, my only concern is that we're not addressing the issue on the other side of the road into um, Pass Road and the whole area. And I, and I hope that this is just the start of that. I mean, you know, sometimes I think we get a bit caught up in community consultation too, expecting that we're always going to get everyone agreeing with us. And the reality is, that ain't going to happen. And I mean, look, you know, it's, it's, it's good that we have the debates, but I think um, certainly, you know, I certainly don't particularly like um, people challenging us from actually going through a process of trying to make decisions because that's all we're here to do. We're certainly going to listen, but I don't think it's uh, um, you know, in this case, like I said, I think we need to take it further and not just look at this little boundary between Hara and, and Ropeby. Um, I certainly think looking at what happens on the other side of um, uh, South Arm Highway, on that bottom side, through Glebe Hill, through the other proposed development, through the rest of that area. Um, and look, we're not going to keep everyone happy, but um, the good thing is they were actually having a go at them, trying to, you know, come to a resolution. You know, there's positive cons and bads to it, but um, you know, I think uh, it, it, it's a good process for us to start the ball rolling and, like I said, hopefully we address those other issues as well.
Oh, John. Um, yeah, I have a few concerns that when we first talked about this, we were talking about how Hara is a Frankentown, it's Frankenstein suburb already. Um, it starts near where I rent my place and goes all the way out here and then turns a few corners along the way. I don't particularly support growing its, its uh, its boundaries any further than they already are. Um, I agree with a lot of stuff that Dean and um, sorry, Alderman Newington and Alderman James are talking about around Glebe Hill. It'd be good to sort that out. And I do kind of view a decision such as this um, is sort of, yeah, getting us into some trouble as Alderman James and Warren spoke about. So I actually don't support the motion. Prefer status quo.
Uh, I totally agree with the comments of Alderman uh, Blomley because, you know, I supported the changing of the name or part A, this which we rescinded tonight. But the, the information we knew at the time, that's the way I went with tonight. Like you, I, I do have some difficulty in changing any boundary from option three to option two to option one or, or leave as is. I, I'm struggling, I really am struggling with that. I can see that between option one and option two is, is only minor. But the fact is, this is where I disagree with Alderman Newington. I think, you know, I like the public consultation. I like getting feedback. If we're wrong, we're wrong. It gives us a chance to correct it. And uh, you know, just to, to change these tonight, I'm not really sure it's the right thing to do. But I could see between option one and option two, there's only a minor difference. But you know, uh, we could keep the boundary exactly as it is and I don't know if, if that's the right thing either. So it is troublesome. I think uh, option two has uh, certainly some advantages, but it's nothing I'm completely happy with. I've got to be honest.
Right reply, Alderman Mulder?
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a couple of issues there is um, I think I might pick up Alderman James's first. The consultation is one of the ones set by the rules. If you've got a problem with it, it's really the, the rules we have to follow are set by the surveyor general and nomenclature board and they are spelled out. And I made a point of saying what they are. To the credit, part of the officer's report says, notwithstanding the consultation requirements of the rules, in the circumstances of a rescission of the council's eighth of April decision, which we've done, it is appropriate to advise the wider Hara Gardens community of the rescission decision, should this decision come to council as provided. I would also like to have seen much broader community consultation. And there is nothing wrong with us as aldermen, as I have done and others have done, is to get hold of a particular uh, decision and broaden the consultation. It's our job to consult with the community. That's what the Act requires us. In terms of the postcodes, true, they are a matter for the surveyor, for Australia Post and Australia Post alone. In terms of the postcodes, true, they are a matter for the Australia Post and Australia Post alone. But it is important that, as the Surveyor General advises to us by writing in a letter, that the possibility of a postcode change should be part of the community consultation. We have seen that letter and that is where the issue of postcodes starts to arise. Because if you go and talk to people who know these sorts of things, there is nothing wrong, as Alderman Bonney says tomorrow, with Australia Post going in and deciding that both Glebe Hill and Howra Gardens are really part of the Ropeby catchment area and are better serviced from 701 with a 7019 postcode. I don't hope they do that. And one of the reasons I'm putting option two forward is that there is a big risk that if we now create a thing called Skillian Road that we will have with houses in two suburbs, that they might decide that they need the same postcode. We did have to go to consultation. You know, the motion that we rescinded said, and although this isn't technically part of it, it's been raised in the debate, the motion did send us out to consultation, the out to community consultation, and that was a fair thing. It went a little bit too far though, I think, in the fact that we were all, that the majority of council supported the idea of initiation of a new suburb in principle. Is it any wonder that the community thinks that we were in the business of creating a new suburb? And it's easy to see it, so it's not misinformation. I would argue that I was actually informing people as to the consequences and as to the possibilities that could arise from it. And as the Nomenclature Board has made absolutely clear...
Other speakers? So the motion is as presented by Alderman Mulder on the board there with option two. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. And moving on to item 12, Alderman's question time, there are no matters on notice. Questions without notice, Alderman Mulder.
No, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy.
Yes, Mr Mayor, neither of these are about rates, roads and rubbish. Through you two, I think Mr Tui, and I'd like to thank Mr Roberts for his deputation here tonight. Thank you for joining us and sharing your story. I would just like to ask if we've actually had any approaches from any agencies outside of the mainstream, I suppose the agencies like St Vinnie's Salvation Army, to see if we have any emergency shelter available or asking for assistance in any other way.
Through you, Mr Mayor, we've had no direct approach from any agency in respect to this matter.
Thank you. And on a completely different note, and perhaps through you, Mr Mayor, to the general manager, our new general manager, could you please advise if there's ever been any formal approach for a development of a surf lifesaving club at day use area one or two at Seven Mile Beach? Thank you.
Through you. Mr Mayor, I'll take that on notice. I'm not aware of anything, but I'd need to check. And I'm certainly not either.
That, oh, good, thanks, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just have one question. What is the council's policy on domestic violence leave?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I should know the answer to this, given my background. Council has an industrial agreement, an enterprise bargaining agreement that I believe does include a domestic violence leave provision, but I'd have to check that to confirm it and I can do that via a briefing report if that assists. Okay.
Mr Nelson, there has been protracted discussion in relation to the subdivision off Woodhurst Road in Seven Mile Beach in relation to the council's role in advising the lands titles office with regard to these three blocks that have been a matter of discussion over the last four or five years. So my question to you, Mr Nelson, is are there any delays on council's part in advising the lands titles office to proceed with issuance of the titles for those three blocks?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll need to take that on notice as well, I'm not aware of any delay. Those blocks were approved to be subdivided or sold a while ago. The original application was for four blocks and that was knocked back. But I must admit I was under the impression that they had been completed. Yeah, I'll put that in a briefing note. Alderman Warren.
I'd like to thank the members of the public. At this point, we've entered the end of the open session of council.